Good evening. The school board meeting for March 28th, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board of Bivard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Bivard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Here.
At this time, I would like to hold a moment of silence for a member of our BPS family who has recently passed away, George Davies, a 12th grade student from Satellite Our thoughts and our hearts are with the family and friends. This evening, we have two students from Roy Allen Elementary School to assist with the pledge and invocation. Sixth grade student Christine Rozal will read the invocation and sixth grade student Marissa Estrada will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I ask that you both remain at the podium so we have the opportunity to learn more about you. Allison or Christine, please proceed. Is it Christine or Allison?
Christine.
Christine, okay, thank you.
There's nothing to fear. You're as good as the best, as strong as the mightiest too. You can win every battle or test, for there is no one just like you. There's only one you in the world today, so nobody else, you see, can do your work in as fine a way. You're the only you there be. So face the world, and all life is yours, to conquer and love and live, and you'll find the happiness that endures in just the measure you give. There's nothing too good for you to possess, nor heights where you cannot go. Your power is more than belief or guess, it's something you have to know. There is nothing to fear, you can and you will, for you are the invincible you. Set your foot on the highest hill, there is nothing you cannot do.
Excellent, thank you.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Marissa.
Yes.
Since you're standing there, we'll start with you first. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, I really like to sing. I was in all-state chorus last year. My father is a comic artist who created Space Coast Comics. My mother is a teacher at Destiny Christian School. I have two siblings and I'm the only girl.
You're the only girl, is that what you said?
Yeah, I have my mom, but I'm the only child girl.
So, do you have your mom, your dad, and your siblings with you this evening?
Yes, they're over there.
Would you ask them to stand, please, so we can recognize and welcome them? So, Marissa, I'm guessing that you are the oldest sibling?
I'm the middle child.
You're the middle child?
Yes.
And what do you like most about being the middle child?
Um, I don't have to do all the chores.
So you have help. Good answer, very good answer. Do you have any pets?
No.
Do you want any pets?
Yes.
Anybody in the audience have pets they would like to share with Marissa? Just kidding, just kidding. So, Marissa, other than singing and you said you went to chorus last year?
I was in all-state chorus.
All-state chorus last year? So what other things do you enjoy doing?
On my free time, I usually read a book. I like to go swimming over the summer and just staying inside and relaxing.
Excellent. Do you have a favorite author?
A what?
A favorite author. How about a favorite type of book? Is there a particular genre that you...
I like Shel Silverstein.
Okay, excellent, very good. And what do you like most about your school?
The teachers there are really polite and nice, and Mrs. Lee.
Very good. And is there anything that you would like to change about your school?
The food.
The food. Yeah. We hear that one quite often, we're working on it. All right, Marissa, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Christine, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I am 12 years old and I am in orchestra and I went to All County last February. And I have no siblings, I have no pets, and I enjoy swimming.
And you what?
And I enjoy swimming.
Okay. Do you swim with each other?
No.
Okay. So, do you have family with you this evening?
Yeah, I have my mom, my aunt, my uncle, and my mom's friends.
Wow, okay. Could you all stand so we could recognize and welcome you? Thank you for joining us. So, you mentioned that you like to swim?
Mm-hmm.
And of course, chorus, singing, anything else that you like to do?
I like to read books, write, and yeah.
Okay. What type of writing do you like to do?
Um, I like to do some narrative writing.
Okay, very nice. And do you have a favorite author?
Um, James Patterson.
Okay. My son would agree with you. One of his preferred writers. And you said you have no pets and no siblings?
Yes.
So how is it being an only child? Do you love it, or do you wish that you had brothers and sisters?
I wish I had brothers and sisters.
Do you? Seems to either go one way or another. I gotta tell you, I was, for the most part, an only, and I was okay with it, so I just lived vicariously through others. Do you have lots of friends that have siblings that you spend time with?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so that kinda makes up for it. All right, what do you like most about your school?
I like all the teachers and the many activities they have.
Okay. Anything you'd like to change?
Um, I would like to change maybe the start time, like...
Okay. Tell us a little bit more about that. What would you like your start time to be?
Like nine.
Yeah. Mr. Craig would like to know AM or PM.
AM.
And Dr. Blackburn would like for us not to talk about that anymore, not this evening. Well, we certainly appreciate you all joining us this evening and for taking the time to do our pledge and our invocation. You can go ahead and join your team again.
Thank you.
Prior to the board meeting, we've had the pleasure of listening to the Roy Allen Chorus under the direction of music teacher Laura Lee. The students will perform one more number, however, please give us just a few moments for the board to move to the front so we can enjoy your performance even further.
So this is the Roy Allen Elementary Panther Chorus, and we are going to perform one more number. It is titled "La La." And I didn't make that up. I was talking with another teacher and she was telling me she was watching SpongeBob one day with her children, and she heard this tune. And so she kind of arranged it, and I arranged it even more. And board members, you're gonna get the opportunity to play some shakers. Students, come on over. They have some shakers with you. So, I don't really watch SpongeBob, but I know there's a character named Patrick, so you're gonna play this. I'm letting you know. They're gonna play Patrick, rest, rest, Patrick, rest, rest. For the rest of you, you're gonna be singing. Can I get a... So the rest of you are gonna be singing, la, 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 la. So you're gonna hear that melody throughout the piece. Please enjoy "La La."
All right, students, that was absolutely fabulous. Thank you so much. Audience, please give them another cheer. And while you're at it, give yourselves a hand for your contributions. Thank you very much, audience. We're gonna take a brief recess while the children gather their belongings and then we'll resume the meeting. I would like to offer my fellow board members the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members, but before we begin, please let me take a moment to recognize education students from Eastern Florida State College. Are they here with us this evening? Can you guys stand, please? Thank you for being here with us this evening, and thank you for wanting to pursue a career in a field where you truly can make a difference each and every day. We need you desperately, so if we can assist in your journey, please don't hesitate to let us know. Board members, do you have recognitions? Anyone? Ms. Duskovich?
I have two specific recognitions. I spent a morning last week out at the Transportation Depot, if that's the correct terminology, with Mr. Creach and his department. And not only do I wanna give a shout-out to him, because it is a massive undertaking, I learned that we have 515 active buses and we could run 6 million miles plus a year transporting kids around the county. I got to meet the routers and the dispatch operators and sit in and listen to some of their calls, and they have a big responsibility, so shout-out to them for all the time they put in to help us get our kids where they need to be going. And then I was able to give out science fair, art and science fair awards at the South Area Science Fair. We have some talented kids, but we also have a lot of hard-working staff and teachers, including Mr. Barry Pritchard, the principal at...
Sunrise.
Sunrise, thank you. I forgot for a second where he was, the principal.
He put on a great program that evening for the children. We had some children that won both art and science awards, and I think that's a phenomenal accomplishment. So those are my two shout-outs.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Who's next, Mr. Craig?
A lot of great things happened in the district, obviously. I did get to spend a afternoon at Audubon Elementary, Dr. Lisa Finale, Patty Alley, and just took a tour of the school. They're doing great work there. And got to visit my daughter's old third-grade teacher when she was at Gardendale, Gina Loggins, who is just a phenomenal teacher, does just such wonderful work with her third graders, and has obviously carried on that tradition at Audubon now. And it was awesome, unbelievable, because I walked in, I was wearing my blue sport coat, and immediately the kids thought I was a pilot. And so they're like, "Are you a pilot?" I said, "I am, as a matter of fact." And we got into a discussion, imagine, about flight again, and about the concepts of flight third graders. And they're asking me all kinds of questions about lift and how the airplane gets through the sky, and how, you know, how much speed we have to generate to get off the ground, just great questions and a lot of fun. Dr. Blackburn has not, I don't think, has visited Audubon yet, and so I bring a gift from Audubon, and I am wearing mine. You get your own pair of Audubon Eagle socks. And you get a shirt if you choose when you get to go visit together. So anyway, a great fundraiser from Audubon, some pretty cool things going on there, but enjoy the visit.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Ziegler.
I only have one shout-out to my new, my only favorite country music star that I got to see at Runaway Country, and I'm not much of a country person, but I'd like to give a shout-out to one of our own from Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High, Danny Craig, who got to sing with...
Merritt Island.
Oh, Merritt Island, I'm sorry. Who got to sing with Locash at one of the headliners at Runaway Country. Very proud of him for getting up there onstage in front of, what would you say, about 30, 40,000 people. Very impressive. I was front row, so I got to be real close and yell and scream, and so congratulations to Danny for getting onstage in front of all those people. That was fantastic.
Very good. Mr. Susan.
First off, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Davis for putting on one of the best teacher employment programs that we've had. We were able to, over at Viera High School, give binders and give employment to some of the best teachers inside the state of Florida. We were able to nab them because the very next week, they had one for the whole state in Orlando, and a lot of the principals that I talked to about the program that we put here said that when they went to Orlando, that the applicants that were over there were not even half as good as the ones that came here. So you can rest assured that Ms. Davis and Ms. Kent for putting that program together, and Ms. Sullivan, it's absolutely amazing what they're trying to do to get us those programs. I also wanna say thank you to Mr. Creach. That 6 million miles is made up of a lot of bus drivers, and everybody knows it's been in the news lately. He's been trying to rob Peter to pay Paul to get them to have enough employees over there, so good job over there for making everything work for us and keeping our people getting to school and getting to all the club programs and everything else. It's Andy's birthday today, or was it Andy's birthday last week?
Sunday.
Sunday, and I wanted to congratulate him on a happy birthday, 'cause I did it for Misty last week.
Seventy.
How was it? What'd you say, John, 70? And then I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Garten. Ms. Garten and I used to teach together, and she is one of the best teachers that I've ever seen. She's also now our social studies resource teacher. She has literally been the forefront for the entire textbook adoption and put together one of the best, you know, open-source, open to everybody, and just done a great job overall for our district along with a lot of our community, so that everybody understands how our textbooks adoption and the textbooks that we've used, how we can, that they're the best that we can do. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Dr. Blackburn, would you like to recognize anyone?
Mrs. Belford, I'm trying to focus, but I can't stop thinking about "la, la, 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 la." The song there, but I'll try to compose myself. First thing I wanna do is a moment of appreciation for principals Anita Jones, Ina Leiba, Todd Sheer, and Chris Reed for taking time out of their schedules yesterday afternoon to work with our aspiring Level 5 leaders over at Quest Elementary School. I walked in on their presentation, a lot of great information. So taking time out to mentor up-and-coming people who are plotting to take your jobs, very, very commendable, so thank you very much. Since, I believe, Ms. Zucker, our CFO, arrived here just about a year ago, and almost from day one, she's been presented with a lot of issues to work on. Our debt, our long-term debt, is one of those issues, and so I'm happy to report today on her behalf that through her hard work and her staff's work, Financial Services completed the refinancing of Certificates of Participation 2007A and 2007B, providing a reduction in future interest payments of $10.6 million. Yes. The market was favorable, and to purchase BPS refinancing bonds, and she and her staff caught the market just in time. This demonstrates the recognition within the financial markets of the sound financial management of our district. Mr. Susan mentioned our phenomenal teacher fair back on March 17th. I wanted to add a few more pieces to that. We were able to interview 113 candidates, and 53 were given employment opportunities for next year. They were given binders, so that's great. I definitely wanna thank Viera High School for hosting the affair, our business partners who sponsored the event, Tropical Realty, Grand Canyon University, Walden University, Sam's Club, Tudor Doctor of Bivard, Florida Teachers, Jimmy Davis Distribution, and of course, Community Credit Union. Over 30 school and district-level employees gave up their time, and of course, our school teams who were out in force hiring. Our efforts don't stop there, I want you to know, in recruiting teachers here to Bivard. Over 43 Bivard Public Schools ambassadors are scheduled to attend 20 recruitment trips this spring. Seven trips have already been completed. This week, we have a team in Pittsburgh. The trips to Michigan and Ohio are scheduled during the week of April 3rd through the 6th, and each one will include a recruitment opportunity at four additional universities. So Dr. Kent and her staff are hard at work making sure that we have a teacher, high-quality teacher, for each and every classroom next year, so thank you for those efforts. That concludes my shout-outs.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. I have a few. Mr. Susan, very nice of you to wish Mr. Ziegler happy birthday. You also had a birthday since our last board meeting, so happy birthday to you. And Ms. Duskovich, I believe one of your babies also had a board meeting, or had a birthday, a board meeting, a birthday since our last board meeting, so happy birthday to your not-so-little one anymore, but very happy birthday. Also wanna give a shout-out to Abby Rex, who is in our communication department, who does just a phenomenal job over and over and over again. And this week, the thing that, finally, I was like, I have to make sure that I give Abby a shout-out, because she does so much hard work for us, and she's always kind of behind the scenes and doesn't really get the recognition and the kudos that she deserves for all the work that she does. But this week, she sent out to us, and I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to look at it in depth, but it was our media coverage.
That's awesome.
And there was so much amazing information on there and links to all of the coverage that we had, I think it was for the week, just, she just does an amazing job for us over and over and over again, so I just wanna say thank you to Abby for all that she does for us, and a huge shout-out to her. Also wanna say a huge thank you to both our ET and our ESE staff for working very, very hard on our enrich issues. Unfortunately, they did continue, and I don't know that all of the problems are completely solved, but I did spend quite a bit of time on the phone with Russell Cheatham and with Dr. Theddy and with Patricia Fontaine, and just trying to get some idea of what's going on and how we can better serve our teachers in those crunch times, and they worked really, really hard, and the feedback was very positive. So thank you both to your teams for your efforts on that. And then my last shout-out is one I really don't want to give, but I feel like it needs to be given, and that is, a lot of people are not aware that we have a crisis response team in the district, and that when we lose a student or a faculty member or a staff member, we have a team of individuals that respond to our schools to provide support, counseling, grief counseling, assist administration with any needs that they may have. And that team has been incredibly busy this year, unfortunately, with crisis after crisis after crisis. And I think it's important that people understand that these are people that have a regular, full-time job in the district. They are not strictly committed to crisis response. They do a normal job, just like the rest of us, each and every day, but when these situations come up, those people drop everything and they run to assist. So wanna thank them for all that they do, also for the administrators at the schools that are receiving the crisis teams and dealing with losses themselves. We, as I said, we've had numerous, unfortunately, and the feedback from the community, from the parents, has been just amazing at the work that our entire team does. So, very, very thankful for all that you do. And with that, I think we were at the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have one recognition item, 24 consent items, three action items, and two information items, as well as two board discussion items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to administrative staff recommendations. Item F-13 on student expulsions was added to the consent agenda, and there was a revision to information item H-40 on renewal of the board's property, boiler machinery, and terrorism insurance policies, as well as the addition of a board discussion item on the 2017-2018 calendar.
What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It is motion by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler, to approve the agenda for the March 28th, 2017 school board meeting. Please, any discussion? Please vote. Still not coming up to you, Mr. Ziegler?
No, technical difficulties.
All right, so we will take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to the administrative staff recommendation.
Mrs. Belford, members of the board, on tonight's agenda, you have six administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve. Second.
It is moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Craig, to approve the administrative staff recommendations. Any discussion? Please vote.
I'm not gonna be able to vote online.
You still can't do it?
No, I'm trying to get back to it.
All right, so we will take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn?
I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize some of the administrative staff personnel present this evening who have been approved for administrative jobs. Before we do that, I'd be remiss if we did not take an opportunity to recognize some very, very distinguished educators, leaders in the audience who will be moving on as they retire from our school system, despite my efforts of manipulation, bullying, and things like that to get them to stay. But we wish them, we wish them many, many happy years in retirement, and really wanna take an opportunity to recognize each one of them. want to take an opportunity to recognize each one of them individually. They, they've all been outstanding leaders for us. First, please join me in acknowledging Mrs. Rosette Brown, outgoing principal of McNair Magnet Middle School.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is very bittersweet. And my retirement plan is right over there, Mr. Kayden Bailey. Kayden Wade. [laughing] I want, and I want to thank you all for affording me the opportunity to serve the students in Brevard County for over 35 years, over 35 years. And I see this as a sincere blessing. And believe it or not, if I had to do it all over again, I would do it the same way, because I love my babies. I am a product of Brevard Public School System, as well as my daughters, Dr. Kendra Bailey, and Dr. Ashley Lipscomb, who's working down in Miami at this time. Although I am retiring, I still plan to be actively involved with the school district in a voluntary capacity. So, again, thank you all so much for affording me that opportunity.
Mrs. Brown, we're going to work you hard in that voluntary capacity, I want you to know. Now I wish to recognize Mr. Joe Loffic, retiring principal from Gemini Elementary School.
First off, I want to thank Dr. Blackburn. It's been a pleasure working for you and the couple of years that you've been here. This is 19 years for me as a principal, 31 altogether, and 27 in Brevard. It's been a privilege serving as a principal in Brevard County. I've always been so proud of Brevard Public Schools. I always feel like we've set the pace throughout the entire state. We've been the trendsetters. And boy, have I had the pleasure to work with a lot of great people like Tara Taylor, and my former boss, where is he? Mark Mullins? There, he's back there. I taught him everything he knows. No, yeah. Mark's been outstanding. Tara's been wonderful to work with. And Jane Klein, my new boss. Jane, I want to tell you thank you too. To the board, thank you so much. It's been a privilege. I look forward to retiring. I look forward to working out more and traveling a whole lot more and, and just relaxing. I'm not ready to volunteer yet, Rosette. Where's that? So, but I want to tell you thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loffic. Thank you, Mr. Loffic. Also here with us this evening is Donna Etzlinger, retiring principal from University Park Elementary School.
It's been an honor to work in Brevard County Schools for the last 25 years, 33 collectively in other states. And it's certainly been an honor to serve the students at University Park Elementary. I'm going to miss the kids the most. But again, thank you for allowing me the privilege of, of working in such a wonderful district. And if you call me and I don't answer the phone, I'm in the pool.
If we could give all of those distinguished educators as they culminate their career, round of applause. And now on to some of our promotions. Congratulations are in order for Mr. Jeffrey Coverdale on his re-classification from the position of teacher on assignment to the position of assistant principal at Gulfview Elementary School.
Thank you. I consider it a privilege to be able to join the fine, talented faculty and staff at Gulfview Elementary. I look forward to the challenges before us, and with their support, I know we're ready to do a great and wonderful job for that school. Gulfview Strong.
Last but not least, let us welcome Rochelle Schwint, our new director of compensation, who's also a graduate of Brevard Public Schools, right?
I'm an Air Force brat.
You're an Air Force brat. Okay. I was close. Your husband's a graduate.
Uh, yes, he is.
Okay, I knew someone in the family was.
And both of my children. They, one a junior in high school, and one that's already graduated, both from Rockledge High. My husband from Cocoa Beach, where his mother was, is a retired BPS schoolteacher as well. So, we keep it all in the family. I'm very honored for this position, and I look forward to digging in and making a difference in the school district.
All right, Dr. Blackburn, will you please tell us about the recognition item on tonight's agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Item B-10 is to acknowledge the programs and teachers recognized by the Florida Music Educators Association at the annual State Clinic and Conference held this past January in Tampa, Florida. Providing background information and presenting the award recipients is our music resource teacher, Cindy Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. And Dr. Blackburn, Chairperson Belford, and members of the school board, the Florida Music Education Association Secondary Educator of the Year designated, designation is awarded annually to one music educator chosen from across the state. We celebrate a lot in Brevard. We have more to celebrate. This is great. This designation goes to a music educator who has served his or her students, community, and profession in an exemplary manner. Ms. Rodriguez, Director of Secondary, Leading and Learning, Dr. Blackburn, Chairperson Belford, if you would please assist with awarding, presenting the designations, and having your photo taken. Mr. Schwint and Principal Pricer, if you would please come forward. We are honored to congratulate Mr. Ian Schwint, Band Director and Symphonic Orchestra Director at Titusville High School, as the recipient of the Florida Music Education Association Secondary Educator of the Year Award. Mr. Schwint is a servant leader and a consummate professional. He is a problem solver. He understands that relationships are the foundation of all things. He sees the big picture from all perspectives, and he handles every situation with diplomacy and respect for all. While maintaining a model band program at Titusville High School, Mr. Schwint provides professional development at the school, district, and state levels. He is a mentor for teachers in Brevard County and across the state of Florida. He serves on the Brevard Music Leadership Team, the Music Advisory Board, the Florida Music Education Association Convention Planning Committee, the Florida School Music Association Board, and the Florida Band Masters Association Music Committee. He also has children and a wife, and I don't know how he does it all. Most importantly, Mr. Schwint positively affects the lives of Brevard students every day through music education. Thank you, and congratulations. Our next awards are the Middle and High School Music Enrollment Award, which are granted to music programs demonstrating high music enrollment in music courses. This award recognizes the effectiveness of programs that offer attractive music curricula, as well as those that excel in the recruitment and retention of students. Schools that meet the criteria will hold the award for three years. During this time, they may be asked to serve FMEA as a resource on the topics of programming, scheduling, recruitment, and retention of students. And I will tell you, we are contacted all the time to see how it's done in Brevard. We are known for a great program. To qualify for the award, 35% at the high school level and 45% at the middle school level must be enrolled in music courses. Since 1994, 21 of our secondary schools have received this award. Many of our schools have received this award multiple times, for a total of 75 awards presented to Brevard Public Schools since 1994. Our newest award recipients are Andrew Jackson Middle School, Principal Anita Jones, music teachers Megan Doyle and Alexandria Reitz. This is the sixth time Jackson Middle School has received this award. Delora Middle School, Principal Bobby Pruitt, music teachers Lisa Benacasa, Veronica Curran, Al Dodds, and Carrie Mormon. Thank you. This is the seventh time Delora Middle School has received this award. John F. Kennedy Middle School, Principal Richard Myers, music teachers are Tabitha Bennett, Jackie Brooks, and Michael Spur. This evening, we have with us Mr. Myers and Jackie Brooks. This is the eighth time Kennedy Middle School, Go Panthers, has received this award. Congratulations.
Can we get one big group picture?
All right, everyone, get a little bit back down. Just keep going. One big group picture. All right, now squeeze together the 10 of you who really like each other. One, two, three. Perfect. Congratulations.
We are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally-directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and our children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for them. Excuse me. Comments regarding agenda items up for action will be considered when making our decisions this evening. Additionally, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request that a response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name, your address, and your group affiliation. Thank you. We will call the speakers up in order. The first three will be Janice Kershaw, Mason Williams, and Doug Murphy. Janice, if you would approach.
Good evening, Janice Kershaw, 3667 Carriage Gate Drive in Melbourne. Good evening, board members and Dr. Blackburn. I'm here tonight to address the Auditor General's finding recommending that you discontinue the practice of making payments to the foundation. We appreciate management's response noting that, noting that there's no statute prohibiting such payment, and Mason Williams will address that next. I also appreciate the position that you're in, as a former board member myself, when you're being asked to go against a finding. We know that you value the foundation's work, and you understand the efficiency of having a direct support organization to provide enhancements for the district. School district is here, there's this $3.5 million there, and the foundation is that bridge between you and the money. And that's why the district started the foundation 30 years ago and absorbed most of the operating expense, up until 2010, when the foundation board proposed taking the foundation to the next level by improving its governance structure, committing to hire a full-time director, and moving staff off of the school board payroll. And it's had the desired effect. Since that time, the foundation's revenues have increased almost $1 million. We've maintained low general operating expenses at 10%, and have invested 90 cents on the dollar into programs benefiting BPS, with good financial stewardship, earning us the distinction of being one of the top 10 education foundations in the nation for the past two years in a row. What's more, is the confidence, this financial stability, in stills and donors who are looking at investing their charitable dollars. The auditor's job to identify risk ignores the inherent return on investment from the annual support that BPS provides, its own DSO, and the opportunity cost of not maintaining that support. The AG also improperly defined the DSO as private sector when it's actually a nonprofit organization, again, a bridge between the school board and the private sector. Nonetheless, the AG has put their recommendation before you, and I understand how much easier it is to just comply. But sometimes, it's important to take a stand, especially where supporting education is concerned. Two things I'd like to point out. First, the auditor's recommendations are non-binding. As you know, this audit cites three past findings on other subjects that have not yet been corrected. Second, the AG has pained multiple school districts across the state for this same finding, and thereby prompting the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations to seek a statutory remedy. Senator Montford has filed a bill this session that would permit school boards to support their DSOs with operations. So, we're hopeful that we can put this issue to bed this, during this session. With this in mind, I would ask that you set aside the AG recommendation for now, and continue to allow the foundation the capacity it needs to maintain that bridge between you and the communities that we engage on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kershaw. Mr. Williams?
Good evening, everyone. Mason Williams, 74 River Falls Drive, Cocoa Beach. I'm attorney with Gray Robinson, and I'm past president of the foundation, and have actually served on the foundation board for over 20 years, believe it or not. And I know full well all the fine work that the foundation has done, and the partnership that we have had with the school district that has been wonderful since 1987. It's pretty frustrating to me to have to, to deal with this, because I believe the, the Auditor General has approached this issue backwards. The audit finding concludes that because the Auditor General is unaware of any specific statutory authority permitting the board to make contributions to the foundation, that the district should discontinue the practice. Now, interestingly, that's just a comment. They do not say, as the rules binding them say, that this is a failure to comply with Florida law. And I'll submit to you that it's not, and that they worded this very carefully. To be valid, and this is why I say they're turning it backwards, to be valid, they had to find that there was a statutory prohibition. And that's based on Florida law and the powers that y'all have. That's very simple, is that you have broad powers over public education in Brevard County, unless restricted or prohibited by the state constitution or Florida law. These auditors looked at it completely differently than that. They said, it's, unless it's specifically authorized, which frankly would restrict y'all's powers and authority. And so, I think that's a concern that you should have when you look at some of the things, because it's a slippery slope. If you can look at things that you don't have broad powers, you have restricted powers that they have to be authorized, instead of the real framework under Florida statutes that you have broad powers, and they have to be specifically prohibited before you can't do something. And there's an Attorney General opinion specifically on that subject, 8372, that says the board can exercise any power for school purposes, except as expressly prohibited. The auditors looked at it backwards. But more importantly, the school's foundation has provided services in support of education and support of your mission since 1987, and the current contract serves education and supports education on behalf of this board. We develop donors on behalf of the board. We We solicit designated funds for schools and programs. We provide support for teachers and school programs. This is all in our contract with you. We provide classroom grants, the ABC Award, Take Stock in Children, Supply Zone for Teachers. All these are a part of the mission, the fine mission of this board, and we are a part of it. And yet, the Auditor General is trying to say that that had to be specifically authorized. You have that power to do what you're doing.
Ms. Williams, I hate to interrupt you, but the three minutes is up. We so appreciate you coming out tonight to give us some clarity on the issue.
Thank you.
Doug Murphy?
My name is Doug Murphy, and I addressed the board last month regarding my concerns about the coverage of Islamic history and the subject World History Textbook, Pearson, 2018. In particular, I am concerned about the inaccurate statements in the textbook saying that the Quran emphasizes social justice, human rights, women's rights, and that Islam extends the rights and protections to women by affirming the spiritual equality of all Muslims. I provided several quotes from the Quran last month with reference to the Quran chapter, if you will, and in a sense, I'm just going to summarize them now. These quotes are in direct opposition to the statements in the textbook. There are statements in the Quran allowing life beating for those who, and the quote is, "For those who may be rebellious, admonish them, banish them, and beat them." That's in the Quran. I looked at three Korans, three different versions, about physical abuse, your women or your tillage, so come into your tillage as you wish. That's a direct quote also. Last month, one board member said, "Well, these textbooks are not perfect, and our students and teachers are smart enough to pick up these things." I say we now have the opportunity to make the text more accurate by making a few minor deletions and not leaving these inaccuracies up to the teachers and students to pick up. One other problem, quote from the textbook, page 123, in Medina, this is Muslim history after the Hijra, "Local people welcomed Muhammad and agreed to follow his teachings. They became a community of Muslims." This is not accurate. The Jewish tribes, the Bannukariza and the Gia, did not agree with Muhammad in Medina, and there were conflicts. Muhammad drove one tribe out and beheaded all the males in the other after they surrendered. This morning, from Wikipedia, I picked this out. The Bannukariza were a Jewish tribe at the oasis now known as Medina, and when they conflicted with Muhammad, it led to their extermination. That came right out of Wikipedia. They obviously did not all welcome him and become a community of Muslims like the textbook states. I am not suggesting that the beheadings that took place in Medina and the Quran paragraphs allowing the abuse of women be highlighted in the textbook, but I'm suggesting the removal of a few words that would make the sentences accurate. I only have three minutes, and it's just enough time to touch on the highlights of my concerns and certainly not enough for the board to determine the validity of my statements. For that reason, I would like the opportunity, in closing, to discuss a few of the details, showing my references and quotes with a school board member or the selection committee to validate my concerns with the goal to make some very minor changes to the textbook or digital version.
Mr. Murphy, I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
I'm pretty much finished.
Next up will be Vanessa Skipper, Lee Boyland, and Anthony Calucci. Mr. Boyland, Ms. Skipper is actually first.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Boyland, Ms. Skipper is before you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't hear Will.
That's okay.
Vanessa Skipper, Brevard Federation of Teachers. Good evening. It is evaluation season for a lot of our teachers, and so as complaints have been kind of rolling in from different teachers at different schools, I really began to think about the differences between distinguished, proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, except for I started to think about, from the lens of a teacher, what we think makes a distinguished administrator. And a few things kind of started my brain thinking about that, and one of them was the feedback the teacher receives through the evaluation process. So we have this fancy schmancy software, Progo, where basically you can almost receive your feedback, and in many cases distinguished administrators have figured out how to give feedback to teachers almost instantaneously because the feedback's typed into Progo and it's sent back to the teacher. According to specific contract language, our contract calls for any evaluation that's going to be used for the formal evaluation of the teacher to be in writing to the teacher within five days. The next piece of the contract talks about the formal evaluation being discussed with the teacher within 10 days. I'm not quite sure that's happening around the district, so we'll definitely have behind-the-door conversations about where that's happening and where it's not. But a distinguished administrator, especially given the technology that we have, will work as hard as they can to get that feedback to the teacher, and I'd say within five days, if not sooner than that. Teachers can only grow if they've gotten feedback as soon as possible. I put out an all-call for teachers to give me their opinion about what makes a distinguished administrator. A distinguished administrator recognizes the value of an educator's time and space and meets with a teacher in the teacher's classroom to complete pre- and post-evaluation conversations. A proficient administrator requires the teacher to come to his or her office where he or she does not have access to materials or the authentic space where he or she serves students every day. A distinguished administrator takes the time out of their schedule to coach and lead you in your classroom with your children, setting examples and working beside you. A proficient administrator simply sends you to a coach for assistance. A distinguished administrator carefully chooses an answer for every dimension, and if unsure, speaks to the teacher to get feedback or evidence. We understand administrators have ratings and lots of teachers to evaluate. A distinguished administrator follows up on teacher requests, replies to all teacher emails, includes teachers in the decision-making process, and delegates with support. Distinguished is consistently fair to all, not a member of any clique at school, and consistently approachable. A proficient administrator-
Vanessa Skipper, I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes are up.
I will send you guys the rest of the comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Boyland?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to comment on the elementary school choir on how great it was. Please pass on my comments to the choir director. Like Mr. Murray, I have concerns about the first several pages of the textbook, Section 2, for World History. I also brought this to your attention at the last meeting, and I have sent each of you a letter and a comment on what I suggested on corrections. My main concerns are the three points. We all worship the same God. I do not believe so. The second is Allah is a compassionate God. I do not find any compassion in the Quran. And the third, which is, I think, a major issue, is that the Prophet Muhammad had two distinct phases in his prophethood, the Mecca period and then the Medina period, and it is not covered at all in the textbook. And this, without understanding the two phases, it is very difficult to understand the Quran, which is not in chronological order. So the only way you can understand it is to read the Hadith, which scholars have done. Basically, the Quran is longest, the chapters with the longest verses goes first to the shortest last, which makes the first recitation by the Prophet Muhammad, the 96 surah out of 114. I would be pleased to provide, meet with the school board or the teachers, as we did in 2013. I was a member of the textbook review committee, as is another member of the audience, Mr. Clyde Shaw, and we produced, I think, a very good supplement. The textbook is much improved over the one we reviewed, but it still needs some fine tuning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyland. Mr. Calucci?
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. As you know, there's a legislative session happening in Tallahassee right now. Not surprisingly, we have a bill out there that's a blatant attack on teachers' unions' constitutional right to collective bargaining. It's unfortunate that some willfully ignore the great things unions have done for our country in order to silence teachers. We take for granted so many labor union victories: weekends without work, work breaks including your lunch, paid vacation and holidays, child labor laws, employer-based health benefits, and FMLA, $8 workday, $40 work week, overtime pay, sick leave, minimum wage, OSHA standards, workers' comp, unemployment insurance, pensions, workplace safety standards, employer healthcare insurance, wrongful termination laws, Age Discrimination Act, whistleblower protection, privacy rights, pregnancy parental leave, military leave, public education for children, Equal Pay Acts, laws ending sweat chops. Here in Brevard, we also take for granted labor's role in making BPS what it is today. I recently asked Vicky Dyer, our Members Rights Specialist, to share some information about what it was like in Brevard Public Schools when she started working for BFT in the 1970s. I just can't help think the board was mistaken when BFT had to file a grievance because teachers at one elementary school were required to search their own rooms during a bomb scare. I wonder why the board fought against a duty-free lunch until 1979? How did it benefit kids when it was not required to give teachers a daily planning period? Did you know that early release Wednesdays were first proposed in 1981? It took 35 years for this board to agree to the early release days, a day that 87% of our teachers find useful for planning? I'm sure there's countless other examples like that. Our first bargaining session is scheduled for April 17th. I ask that you remember many things that seemed outrageous at the time are now commonplace expectations for workers. I ask that you thoughtfully consider the perspectives of labor with a full understanding that we've done great things to advance teaching and learning in Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Next up, we have Dan Bennett, Stephanie Connolly, and Rasha Muborin. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Hello, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. I have to follow that. Wow. Great, great history of unionism right there. I'm going down another topic that was already brought up tonight but from a different angle. Apparently, our annual CAFER audit report has come out, and I want to address a portion of it. First up, let's say that it's evaluation season, and we obviously have a highly effective and distinguished newspaper corps reporting us because we can't seem to stay off the front page. But all things considered, this year's audit really was not that bad compared to some of the, I'll say, scoundrelous things that have happened in the past from your predecessors and some predecessors and people in the back row. But there was one item that caught my attention, and it has to do with the best and brightest, which I know you gave the warning not to use bad language. I'm just going to say best and brightest is stupid, and I'll let you all fill in some. I hope that's appropriate for the board. I'll let you all fill in what words I'm really thinking about that program. It's a program where they take teachers' high school, college entrance exams, no matter how long they've been teaching, maybe 30 or 40 years, no matter how long or old those tests are, and they give them a bonus based on those test exams from, in some cases, we have teachers digging through closets from the 70s to find those reports. It was, well, it was a stupid program, and we got some indication that it was going to go away after its second year. Turns out, it's not going away. It's being put on steroids, and now they're looking to expand it in a stupid way. Now, this is Tallahassee, which is where stupid comes from, and they're looking like they're going to drop it further into our district. But anyway, it showed up in the audit because the legislators passed this, well, they passed a stupid thing, and then they give it to the DOE to give direction to the district how to implement it. And those directions were ambiguous, contradictory, nonsensical. And I know that the folks at the district did their best to figure out who gets it and who doesn't. Now, we had some objections at the time. It wasn't contract language, so I couldn't grieve you, but we were reading the law along with some district folks, figuring out who could get it, who couldn't. As with a lot of things, it comes down to who's a classroom teacher, who's classified. Sometimes it comes down to computer coding, who's classified. Sometimes it comes down to what was the 80th percentile back from the early 1970s on these test scores. But the district folks did their best. A couple people got excluded that I think should have been included. But then the audit report, after incomplete and nonsensical directions from the DOE, said that a couple people might have been paid that shouldn't have been paid. And then they gave a recommendation that this money from over a year ago, or almost a year ago, should be paid back. And I'm here to tell you tonight that would be stupid. The auditors don't direct you what to do. They can give you recommendations, and they might try to give you a recommendation of right and wrong. There's no law that money has to be returned when you misappropriate a bonus. These were teachers that had the score, met the conditions, and perhaps on a technicality, they get money that Tallahassee didn't want them to get, but you know what? That's just bad business. If you were to go back right now and tell folks after their congratulations and their financial bonus, if you were to go back a year later and say, "We found out, oops, something wrong. We have to collect the money from you," that would just be wrong. Y'all aren't stupid. You know the right thing to do. Don't try to collect that money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And just for the record, Mr. Bennett, my fourth grader does think that that particular word that you opted to use is the S-word, so let's keep it that way, okay? Stephanie Connolly.
My name is Stephanie Connolly, and I'm a STEM Lab teacher at Discovery Elementary in Palm Bay. Today, I stand before you with a passion and a concern for science professional development and instruction in Brevard Public Schools. To my understanding, having recently checked Beacon, the position of elementary science resource teacher has not been posted since Ed Short's retirement. Ed left a legacy of increasing our professional capacity for science and high-quality professional development. He encouraged our leaders, our school leaders, to embrace explicit science instruction and to deliberately infuse it into their master schedules. Although some inconsistencies remain depending on the schools, our current successes in science will not continue without this type of passion for science leadership at the elementary level. For example, citing 2015 and 2016 comparative data for overall science performance. In 2015, Brevard scored higher than the state by five percentage points. Overall for the state was 53%, and Brevard Public Schools was 58%. In 2016, our students outperformed the state by seven percentage points. Overall for the state was 51%, and Brevard Public Schools held their own at 58%. Brevard has been dubbed "The Space Coast." Despite my opinion that 58% is just not enough, if we continue to leave the science resource teacher position open, the passion for science professional development and instruction will fade at the elementary level. Our strategic plan under the Leadership and Learning Objective II states, "Although BPS is a high-performing school district, we realize that achievement gaps exist, and attention to this area must be addressed through building the capacity of teachers to meet the learning needs of each individual student." I'll leave you with this quote. It is from the 2017 spring edition of The American Educator. The article is titled "Stories of Struggle." A serious drawback to holding the belief that high-level science performance requires exceptional inborn ability is that students tend to give up before they give themselves a chance to develop their own talents. Quality science inquiry and guided practice nurtures our natural instinct to explore. I know that- I know that I have learned a lot about effective science instruction, but I have more to learn. I respectfully request that you consider filling the elementary science resource teacher position with a high sense of purpose for the sake of our students, our teachers, and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. All right, up next, we have Rasha Mubarin. Is that correct?
It's close.
I'm sorry?
Rasha Mubark.
Mubark, okay.
Fifty-two nineteen Timberview Terrace, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-one-nine. My name is Rasha Mubarak, and I work for the Council on American Islamic Relations of Florida, one of the largest civil rights organizations in the state. As we work to represent all marginalized communities, not just Muslim communities, that are facing any kind of discrimination, we also work to secure a better understanding of Islam. On March fourteenth and today, two members of ACT testified to remove and/or revise a portion of Islam in the ninth-grade world history books. Their agenda, let it be clear, is not to create and nourish a beaming classroom environment of accuracy and high education. Rather, it is to be disruptive, and it is offensive to each of you board members, educators, more importantly, our students, essentially creating a less safe environment in our classrooms. Their mission, the ACT of America mission, is an Islamophobic agenda which has been ongoing for over a decade. ACT for America has been repeatedly recognized and deemed a hate group across the country by many organizations and communities. ACT is a part of a $200-million-dollar network that focuses on discriminating people based on their faith, and more specifically, this group focuses on Muslims and anti-Islamic rhetoric. They are not concerned with your child's education. Rather, their project consists of enlisting their members to identify Islamic entities, businesses, social organizations, schools throughout North America. In fact, it gets as ridiculous as a member of ACT attended a meeting in North Carolina at which they suggested the killing of Muslims. This was repeatedly reported and suggested. They are not concerned of how well Brevard County students performed, nor about their futures. They are using our students for their one intention, and that is to push their anti-Islamic agenda. This hateful mission will continue to reoccur as we are revisiting it today from 2014. This is political fear. This is outlandish, accusatory, and hateful. As educators, as parents, as concerned residents, we should be offended and be ready to defend our students and their right to accurate education. This group holds zero credibility, and we have to remember their intent remains the same: to defame and marginalize a group of people based on their faith and how they choose to pray. As educators, we have to be responsible leaders and true ambassadors of education. This is dangerous and hazardous to our classrooms and our students. It's this kind of verbiage that creates division in our schools, our communities, and in this country.
Three minutes is up. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you. Sir? All right, next up, we have Mosen Al-Hadad, Dania Jarra, and Carmel Al-Shabi.
Good evening. Mosen Al-Hadad, two sixteen, twelve terrace in the landing. I've been around for over twenty-five years. I'll try to make this short. I'm just a concerned citizen here. We hear a group of concerned Muslim parents, schoolteachers and administrators, students and ordinary citizens, to give our input to the current discussion about how our religion and how it is depicted in the ninth-grade world history textbook. We're all cognizant of the importance of teaching history in our schools. How it is taught and how our kids learn will determine and shape the way they think, live, and interact in the world they live in today and in the future. It will also determine not only how they see others, but how they see themselves. Given the incessant barrage of information we're flooded with every day, some of us may have misunderstood or have been misguided by the information that they have about Islam and yet others who just do not know what to do or think about it or think of it. As practicing Muslims, some of us are here to help clarify and dispel any misconceptions about our religion as some have claimed in the last meeting and what we hear today. Given the format and time limitations, we probably may not be able to cover all and in detail the allegations and claims, but we'll do our best. We'd also like to extend our hand in invitation to the two or three gentlemen that have been arguing about this, and everyone else here, everyone here, to come to our mosque so we could not only answer your questions, but learn about us Muslims as well. Perhaps this is an opportunity to bridge that gap, if any. Since I have a little bit more time, I'm gonna try to put this in. I think it's important that many of the points that has been made today has no relevance. And the allegations made by Mr. Murphy or Mr. Boylan, they're taken out of context. And you really, because of the way this is set up, the format, there's not enough time to give you point by point in detail, and we really like you to understand, because like any other text, when you read it and take it out of context, it is not gonna sound right, whether it's Islam, you know, the Old Testament, or the New Testament, or Buddhism, anything. You read and you take it out of context, it will just not look right. Never mind you. Us Muslims need guidance. So please, if you give us a time, we promise you, heck, come to my house. I'll have some food, and we'll talk about it. All of you are invited, whether it's through emails or however, however you want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Dania.
Good evening. My name is Dania Girah, and I am a freshman at West Shore High School. I am currently taking the world history class, and we have already covered the chapter on Islam. This is a response to the allegation made by Mr. Lee Boyland that Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, was a pirate. Muslims were oppressed, humiliated, forced into hunger, tortured, and killed. To escape the oppression in Mecca, they had to flee to Medina after thirteen years of hardship. The idea of the prophet being a pirate has no merit and is false for the following reasons. Raiding was a way of life in seventh-century Arabian desert. The smaller tribes made alliances with the larger tribes as a means to protect themselves from attack. However, the Muslims did not attack any tribe since the formation of the new Muslim nation in Medina. They only went out to raid a specific caravan of the Quraysh to retrieve their rightful possessions, i.e. their property and possessions, when they were forced to leave Mecca. The Muslims did not run out of money. The Muslims had also waited for two years since the migration to Medina before getting revelation for permission to retaliate the oppression by the Quraysh. They targeted specifically the caravan of Abu Sofyan and since he had taken their possessions. And because Abu Sofyan got wind of the planned raid, he rerouted his caravan, and the raid did not take place. Instead, the Quraysh assembled an army with the aim of destroying the Muslims. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight and to clarify the history and that an alteration in the history textbook would not be for historical purposes, but for alternate reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We always appreciate hearing from our students, so thank you. Carmel?
Good evening. My name is Carmel Al-Shabi. I'm a freshman at Melbourne High School, and I'm here this evening to respond to the current contention about the depiction of Islam in the 2018 Florida World History textbook. I'm not here to cause any controversy, but to simply clear any misconceptions that may have been speculated. Recently, there has been a discussion about the correctness of content in the textbook about Islam. The problem is, there is no problem. I have read every page that mentions Islam in the textbook and did not stumble upon anything untrue, though you may have heard that the textbook incorrectly explains how all humans are created equal in the eyes of God. Page 122 from the textbook says, "Islam extended rights and protection to women by affirming the spiritual equality of all Muslims. Coming from a Muslim woman, this teaches students nothing but the truth. Whether man, woman, white, black, we are all equal in the eyes of our Lord." In our Prophet Muhammad's last sermon, peace be upon him, he said, "All mankind is from Adam and Eve. An Arab has no superiority over a non-Arab, nor a non-Arab has any superiority over an Arab. Also, a white has no superiority over a black, nor a black has any superiority over a white, except by piety and good action." These words came from Islam's most beloved prophet, so for anyone to say that Islam promotes sexism or racism is patently false. Take me as an example. I'm an Ivy student. I'm on two soccer teams. I play viola for my high school's orchestra. And guess what? I'm a Muslim woman. Does that look like I practice a religion that oppresses women or degrades them from the rest of society? Of course not. And for anyone to say that it does is simply out of arrogance. Ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Raed Nina Roger, and then Mike.
Good evening. My name is Raed Al-Shabi, three-five-three-zero, Poseidon Way, in Atlantic, Florida. I'm a Brevard resident. I'm a concerned citizen with the same topic that we're discussing about the Islamic chapter in the ninth-grade textbook. I am a practicing Muslim. I hold an MBA degree, and I have enough knowledge to understand the Islamic chapter text in the ninth-grade world history book. I read most of the chapters, most of the pages, and I see that it's balanced and true. If I was here four years ago when it was debated, I would have suggested to maybe add a few more issues about the belief of Muslims. There is a chapter about the pillars of Islam. Pillars is just about, you know, your rituals. You don't wanna, I mean, students don't need to know that we fast Ramadan or, you know, go to Mecca or, you know, pay the zakah or do all these rituals. It's something personal. I was hoping that they would go and present the principles of our belief. What do we believe in? We believe in Allah is the creator of heavens and earth. We believe in the angels. We believe in the prophets that came down. We believe in the books, the Bible and the Torah. We believe in the destiny. Those are the things that give a student a more of an understanding about the religion. Now, from an Islamic, as a parent, it's important for me to see my kids get exposed to all knowledge. I have three of them that went through this textbook. I know they were able to debate it and ask questions in school and develop their own opinion at the end. Seeking knowledge with presumptions and listening to opinions through Fox, CNN, or Al Jazeera is very dangerous. Reading, reading, and seeking knowledge through proper resources and the education that is not manipulated by a political agenda is what defines us as a great nation. I came from a nation thirty years ago that government dictated what the people should believe, and we shouldn't get into that. I appreciate this forum that allows all of us to express our opinion, for or against. As a Muslim, I assure you, the contribution of Islam in history cannot be denied, especially in the medieval times. History of the world is like a tapestry that connects civilization into beautiful story of different colors. It's up to us to look for darkness or enlighten our minds with the brightness from all civilization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nina?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Shamsedine, five-three-five Hiking Trail, West Melbourne, Florida, three-two-nine-oh-four. I want to start my small speech with a little background about myself. I'm currently studying my, to have my doctorate degree in physical therapy. I love patient care. I believe in rehab, and as a woman, I am in nowhere, in no way oppressed. So by that, I can start my little speech. This is a comprehensive response to the allegations made by Mr. Doug Murphy that the textbook portrays Islam in an inaccurate light and does not reflect the true history, since, among other issues, that in Islam, men are more superior to women. Critics of Islam have always managed to selectively pull verses out of context to quote doctrines from the Quran or teachings of the Prophet, peace be upon him, without fully understanding the intended purpose of when, how, and why it was revealed. Many of the allegations made here in the recent past about the inaccuracies of the textbook, such as a man can have four wives while a woman can only have one husband, how two women witnesses are equal to that one of a man, of one man, I'm sorry, and how a man can divorce his wife by verbal declaration but a woman cannot. These are ill-understood Islamic concepts taken out of context, which clearly shows the danger of making judgments without proper knowledge and guidance. The Islamic ruling on issues such as the right of women to own property and the right to education have, over the past fourteen-hundred years, shown the elevated status of Muslim women in Islam, long before any of these were afforded to women in the West. Islam democratized education in the seventh century, when the Prophet declared that the pursuit of knowledge is obligatory to both males and females. Women's scholarship has been encouraged and recognized since then in fellow Islamic history. In fact, the oldest running university in the world is in Lake Orion in Fels, Morocco, and is also established and funded by a woman. Muslim women get to keep their property since the time of the Prophet, and they also get to keep their names for themselves even after marriage. Women cannot be forced to marry against the rule. They also have the right to seek divorce if conditions of marriage become unbearable. The Prophet, peace be upon him, is known to have said that heaven lies at the feet of your mother. Prophet Muhammad worked for a woman for a long time, his first wife, Khadija. Cultural influences and other issues pertaining to power by men and some Muslim majority have, however, shown a different reality as we see today in countries.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
My name is Roger Ganzitano, forty-two-seventy Turtle Mountain Road, Melbourne, Florida. I'm the ACT for America chapter leader for the Space Coast chapter. I'm here as a concerned citizen and an individual. My remarks have to be split. I'd like to respond, and I probably could use more time than what I'm gonna be allowed. But the comments and the speech from Miss Rasha spent the entire time as a hateful speech against ACT for America, and she certainly is uninformed. I've accepted the other gentleman. I don't remember his name. I've handed him my card, and I accept his polite invitation to sit down and have a discussion about all of this. You can bring my friend Hassan Shibley, the executive director of CARE in Florida, with you if you so desire. You can also invite Mr. You can also invite Mr. Bashar Al-Halabi, is it? But I welcome that conversation. My prepared remarks, I simply wanted to address the textbook issue. I can't tell you how infuriating it is to have somebody from an organization that was founded by terrorists call me a hate group, okay? I've been through this with the papers. It's just wrong. The proposed books, I want to thank the board for their previous work on the current textbook. I was involved much more heavily with that than I am in this textbook. It is the impression of the overall text that I'm concerned with. The omission of the horrific acts that Muhammad did in Medina after his peaceful time and the good deeds that he did to quell the unrest in that city, it deteriorated, and he cut off the heads of men and boys and captured the women and other children. So to not present both sides of his life in Medina, or both sides of his life in Mecca and Medina, gives students an improper and flawed evaluation of the life of this man. So if the textbook is going to address the life of Muhammad and is going to explain how Muhammad came to be and how Islam came to be in that period, then they should address it accurately. If we change history and we omit the facts that are insulting to some people, then we wouldn't have described Hitler the way that we did. We would have only addressed the issue of his life prior to the Third Reich, and that, of course, would be wrong. I respectfully ask this board to consider the presentation of Muhammad in Islam, and I beg your pardon, and Islam in the proposed textbooks as dutifully as what you can, and I welcome any interaction with my Muslim friends. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a great evening.
Good evening, Mike Bizzaro, 13 Steamboat Drive in Mikkeld. I want to apologize to the board for the last month for not being clear like I should have been, so let me just go to the source documents. Islam claims to be from God's covenant with Abraham. On section 113.10 of my website, I have listed all the times where they say that in the Quran on God'sCatholicDogma.com. So let's take a look at that. Proverbs 30.4, "Who has ascended into heaven? And what is the name of his son?" The Quran in Merriam 1935 is not befitting of Allah that he should beget his son. So who is right? The God of Abraham in Proverbs 30 or Muhammad? They can't both be right. So Phemus 3:8, "The God of Abraham, covenant writing, expect me," said the Lord, "in the day of my resurrection to come, to gather the kingdoms." The Quran in Anissa 4:157, they said, "We killed Christ, the Son of Mary, but they killed him not." Who is right? The God of Abraham or Muhammad? Daniel 3:92, "God of Abraham, covenant writing, in the midst of the fire there was no hurt in them. The form of the fourth is like the son of God." Muhammad writing in the Quran, Ahl Al-Khalas 112.2, "Allah, eternal absolute, begeteth not, nor is he begotten." Who is right? The God of Abraham or Muhammad? In the Quran, they're saying the opposite. Okay, one more on this. In Genesis 18, God visits Abraham, and he's three people, and Abraham worships him as a three-person, more than one-person divinity. And in the Quran, in Nisa 4:171, "Believe and do not say God is a trinity; desist from your assertion," desist from this assertion. Again, who is right? The God of Abraham or Muhammad? Now, can somebody be a quote-unquote prophet who is denying the God of Abraham teachings for 4,000 years? And how can he be a prophet if he's rejecting and contradicting thousands of years of prior prophets? It's preposterous. So based on this proof, and this simple comparison logic and linear thinking, you have to come to the conclusion Islam is not a religion, so that if you discriminate against quote-unquote Islam, you're not discriminating against a religion, you're discriminating against a secular group who claims to be a religion. Then lastly, I forgot to start my stopwatch. Let me take a quick look at the Quran in terms of this whole violence issue, which is really a secondary issue. The violence issue is very secondary to the fact that there is no Allah. The Quran in Azab 3:361, "They shall have a curse on them; they should be seized and slain with mercy." And Anfal 8:60, "Strike terror into the hearts of Allah's enemies." And Nisa 4:76, "Fight in the cause of Allah, and those who reject the faith, fight those against their friends of Satan."
Mr. Bizzaro, I'm afraid to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your three minutes is up.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Have a great evening.
Let me give copies of your own.
You may take them over to the table, sir. Thank you. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. I have a request from a board member for a recess. We will take a brief 10-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. It moves us into the consent agenda.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, there are 24 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Motion put forward to accept the consent items as presented. Any discussion? And the vote passes 5-0. We will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are three items for your consideration. The first one is item G36 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve G36.
Second. Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Duskovich to approve G36. Any discussion? Dr. Blackburn. It will pass as 5-0, Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G37 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve G37.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve G37. Any discussion? Passes 5-0, Dr. Blackburn.
Item G38 is on the student accommodation plan.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve G38.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve G38. Any discussion? Passes 5-0. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Blackburn.
There are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss either item? Okay. We are now at the board member reports and discussion point section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Do any board members have any reports they wish to provide before we get into the discussion items?
I have one small thing. I'll just go and get it out of the way. You asked for us to report on our assignments when we first started this year off, and my assignment is the values adjustment board. And we finally had our meeting, and I really don't have much to report. We go in, we meet, we approved unanimously the values that the property appraisers set, and it's not much to report, but you asked me to report, so I am.
Great job, Ms. Duskovich. Thank you.
Yeah, it was hard work.
Any other board member reports prior to discussion items? Okay, then that takes us to the first discussion point. Mr. Craig, you asked to have a discussion about Enrich.
Yes, ma'am. And this is, I think, maybe a little bit OBE because we have taken it off the agenda, but I know Dr. Theddy has put together at least some discussion points to kind of give us an update. Obviously, her email about the issues within Enrich led me to question why we would immediately sign up for another year of it, realizing that there is a transition to, before we go to the state-sponsored capability. So I don't really have anything more to say, other than I appreciate you quickly responding, and then maybe you can give us your points and the plan going forward.
Thank you. We know Enrich has been difficult for teachers. We know it's been very difficult for them to get the progress notices done due to a variety of reasons, some on our part, some on the vendor's part. We're working to correct those problems. I can't make a promise that they're corrected, but we are working diligently and have been working cooperatively as a team to get that accomplished. We do, I do believe that the right thing to do for our teachers and the right thing to do moving forward is to extend the contract for a year while we do the training on the free peer system. It'll take us about six months to get all of the training done of the teachers and get everybody switched over while they still have access to the old system and still have access to the data in the old system and the IEPs and the progress notices in the old system. So that, moving forward, would be our proposal. It is not on the agenda tonight. It would come back on the 18th of April. We've worked through some mitigation factors related to problems that could happen by still using Enrich, and one of those dates will be May, when we do the progress notices again for the final end of the year. The problems that we've identified have consisted of some things related to the load balancer that's supposed to keep the system flowing, and we've bypassed the system, and we did a quasi-load test yesterday to see if we could stress the system. We weren't able to get enough people on there to show any stress to the system, but in moving forward, if we choose to go straight to the peer system, we would have to train all of the teachers this summer, prior to the start of the school year, after they have all of their IEPs and things written in Enrich, which is why I want to propose, moving forward, with Enrich for the year, knowing that we can still have a problem with the load balancer. And what would we do with that? We would make sure our communication plan to our teachers is much improved over what we've done. We have tried to work through the Enrich user group, sending messages when things haven't been good, sending messages when things are corrected so that they can get back onto the system. We've heard the cries of our teachers, that some teachers have asked for potentially having us stagger the usage in May to make sure that we don't stress the system and don't have it shut down like it did last week, and that's definitely one of the mitigation factors we've considered. We have identified staff who will be available to be able to assist during peak user time so that we can make sure that our teachers don't run into the same trouble they run into in October, and then again in January and in March of this year, and in May of last year. The things we've run into and the things that we anticipate could be issues moving forward would be a total system shutdown, like happened last week, a partial system shutdown, and just a slowing down of the system. And how will we work with teachers on that? And how do we compensate teachers? We have authorized principals to award compensatory time to teachers who have been adversely impacted by having to work on progress notices or do them over in some cases. We have been, I'm trying, I'm looking at my notes, making sure I've covered all of my points, but the problems that we have had, and I'll let Russell speak to the technical specifications on those issues, they have ranged from teachers not being able to save what they're doing. So they're on the system, they're writing an IEP, they're writing a progress notice, and they can't save it. We have adjusted the timeout. It was timing out after 60 seconds. That has been adjusted to five minutes so that nobody's in the system, working, gets distracted for 60 seconds and lose everything, or worse yet, the spinning circle spins and then they get shut out of the system. So we've adjusted that, and we hope that that has mitigated that problem. They have ET staff working with Enrich has bypassed part of the load balancing system, going directly to our servers so that we're not passing through the load balancer, which has potentially been one of our problems. That's not a good solution permanently. That's why we were trying to load test things yesterday to see if we could stress the system, and we weren't successful. So we'll have to do that again. We weren't successful in the fact that we couldn't get enough load on there. The test was successful because the system worked well. Does that help a little bit?
It does, but the only thing that I will, and I appreciate all that, and that, it's awesome, you put a lot of thought into it, obviously, in addressing the human capital side of what we have spent. My question, though, goes back to if we decide to extend this contract, have we, via your email, it's not just our side, there are issues with the actual product itself, and what is the clawback for us to go back to Enrich to recover some of those expenses, those internal expenses? If we have not approached them as a company and said, hey, we're holding your feet to the fire here, then I suggest that we do that through legal, and that we make the contract have some teeth in it so that we actually are not just signing on for what we already had, that we actually have some buy-in from the company and their acknowledgement that they have some issues from their side as well, and that they're going to be there immediately to assist, and that if we get to a certain point, whatever that breaking point is, and they're responsible for it, that they have some ownership into it, both financial and maybe, you know, releasing us from the contract or whatever the case may be. So I don't know where we are in that discussion process, if we've gone back to the company, if we've made those overtures, but to me, just extending the contract without putting any specifics into it is probably not something that I think we should do immediately.
Okay. I can tell you, we've been working with the company. We have not gone to them through the legal route and saying, asking them for anything back, because it's very difficult, at least for me and my role, to be able to determine where the fault lies. You know, some of the fault does lie with BPS, some of it lies with the company, and with different things that we've tried to change to mitigate all the problems that we've had. I would like Russell to speak to that piece of it, because he can tell you some of the things that we've changed, so you're aware of it, but I did write down your concern about going through the legal route with the contract, which we will do.
So before Mr. Chita mentions that, I just want to add an exclamation point on to that, right? Yes, we will, Mr. Byssler, reach out to you and explore legal repercussion for the company not fulfilling its duty over the next contract year, and we'll be able to bring that back to the board.
And in terms of the technical piece of this, you know, when the systems stopped working, we kind of went all hands in, started, you know, we bypassed the configuration the system should be in just so that teachers could get back to work, but we're testing the load balancer. The load balancer that we have here on site isn't necessarily the one that they would like us to have, which could be a part of the problem. You know, we changed the configuration. We've done several things. We're still trying to find out exactly what the problem was, but as we figure those things out, I think it will be important for us to reach out to them to get some assurances moving forward, and we'll work to do that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the comments, and just to make sure, thank you for going all hands on deck. I mean, I know that, you know, it's not the only thing you're doing, and it's not the only mold that you're trying to whack at the time, so thank you for doing that. Obviously, our teachers appreciate that as well, and I appreciate Dr. Blackburn's backup on ensuring that we have a, maybe a little bit more of a safety net with the company there through contractual means, just so we have something to hang our hat on as we go, move forward.
Go ahead, Dr. Theddy.
May I offer one more thing? In the process of moving to peer, as we move teachers to peer, we will be moving them off of the Enrich system, just so you know, there'll be that year-long transition. It'll actually take us till about February of next year, under the plan we developed several months ago, after surveying our membership, our teachers, working with BFT. So we'll have fewer users as we go through that extension, if we are to extend with Enrich, you know, with the board's blessing later on.
Mr. Ziegler.
Has there been any admission by this company or by comments you've seen in their user groups that this problem is occurring with any other users?
There's been, as Dr. Theddy stated, there's been a There's been, as Dr. Thedde stated, there's been a various problems. The connection problem that we experienced where teachers just could not connect to the system, that hasn't been something that we've seen with other districts that I'm aware of.
Okay, and that's what I thought, which makes it really hard to point the finger at them, but they're trying to point the finger at us. Technically, I know it's really difficult to solve these problems, and I appreciate your diligence on this. I wanted to go a step further and piggyback off of this because we've been having, obviously, a lot of software conversations lately, and there are other software packages that I know you have challenges with. Progo, the evaluation software, is one that is, not that it's problematic, it's just extremely time-consuming for employees to enter data into that program. I'm understanding it takes, it's, I was going to say a waste of, waste of time, the cumbersomeness of the software. And the only reason I bring that up is not that you need to jump in to solve a Progo problem, is that, you know, in running like a business, we need to make sure that our staff is comfortable bringing us recommendations for anything that improves process procedures. I know Dr. Blackburn is all about that. However, because of some of the things that we've stumbled on in software, I'm getting the feeling that there's a lot of apprehension in staff to come forward and say, "We need the software to solve this problem." Like, we certainly need some fleet maintenance software. We have problems that would have been rectified if we had it four, five years ago, maybe fleet tracking, maybe other areas of our organization. And I would just like to make sure, Dr. Blackburn and to the board, that we send a message to our employees that we still support them in bringing forward sound business suggestions to us, even if it includes software. I don't want there to be that fear of, "Oh, my God, I mentioned software and somebody's going to bite my head off." We can't allow that to happen, but I know that apprehension is out there, so that's why I'm saying this. I want to try and break the ice and make sure that we're supporting our people to bring us back sound solutions without any fear of the fact that it's software, because we need software to run our large organization. And thank you, though, for what you're doing. I know it's very difficult.
And these are some of the same things that we've been talking with Cabinet about. We're really trying to change the culture just to make sure that people are collaborating with ET and that we're back at the table. We've gotten away from that as a district, and we think we'll have better success in the future as we have better collaboration, and as you say, people bring their ideas to the table. It is important, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiedem and Dr. Thedde. We appreciate your time this evening and explaining all of that on top of all of the work that you and the entire team did to get us back up and running. The teachers were very appreciative. Next, we have another discussion point, which is assigned to me, and I did ask Pam to add it to the calendar, or to the discussion, but I think there are a couple of board members that have had some discussion around this, and that is that the 2000, well, let me back up. The current year, our spring break is scheduled for very late in the year. The majority of the other districts in the state have already gone to spring break. I have no data to support this, but anecdotally, what I'm seeing and hearing in schools is an increase in behavioral issues with students, an increase in frustration levels for teachers, an increase in stress levels for administrators, and I think that probably is boiling up to our district staff as well as they are having to come in and provide additional support. So, the question kind of arose as to why exactly is our spring break so late this year compared to all of the other districts? And then, more concerning to me is that we are also scheduled to have a very late spring break next year. So, have reached out and spoke with Anna Diaz to try to get some understanding, I guess, as to the thought process behind that. And the response that I got was that it had to do with not interfering with the testing schedule any more than necessary, I guess. So, I guess I would like some clarification on that to better understand exactly what that means, because the state has a, the testing calendar is the same for all districts in the state, and yet we have other districts that are breaking at other times. And I'm not saying it's not the right thing for us to do, I'm just saying I would like to better understand why that was the thinking. From one perspective, I shudder to think that we're allowing a state accountability system and testing window that we have expressed extreme concern about, drive decisions that may not be in the best interest of our teachers and our students. And I just want to make sure that if that's the route that we're going, that we're doing it because we have a really good reason to do it, I guess, would be my comment. So, I don't know, Dr. Kent, Ms. Diaz, if you could provide us some depth on that so that we can better understand?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. As far as this year's calendar is concerned, I wasn't involved in that process, however, my understanding is that the selection was made of having this particular week as a, as the week for spring break because we were looking at the state assessment calendar that we had at the time, because they sent a preliminary calendar. The same thing again happens this year, we begin in October to do our planning for that, actually earlier than that, but the committee met and convened in October, and the committee is a cross-functional team of teacher support staff, district-level directors, and a host of other people. And they began looking at a preliminary calendar against the standards for the state and for our school board policies, and they look at that and go with that, and what Naida Francis has shared with us is that that will be the week that will be least impactful to the testing window, and there are many different testing times that are happening. And we're not only looking at how it impacts our students, but also our staff and the planning that they have to do in preparation for the testing. So, it was based on the feedback that we got from the committee, and that's how the decision was made. However, the calendar always comes up for information and for approval, and we're always willing to reconvene and go back and look. We are concerned about the impact that that would have on the community if there is changes made this late.
Dr. Blackburn, you had a comment?
Just a quick follow-up. One, I'd love for us to, at some point, kind of quantify the other calendars in the other districts. I know of districts that aren't on our calendar, but I do know of districts who are on our calendar also, so I would love to see, have us quantify that. But, question, the only reason for our calendar is assessment, or are there other factors that play into?
There are a lot of competing demands, a lot. But, one of the, for the spring break, one of the most, the highest-weighted issues was the fact that the testing window is so large, so it makes it very difficult for us to find a week that is not impacting that window in one way or the other.
What I would say to that, whatever portion of the decision was made because of assessment, and trust me, I know how we feel about assessment, but the brutal reality is our educators are still evaluated based on that assessment that we all have problems with. Our students have significant decisions made to them and for them based on these assessments. So, while that brutal reality still exists for our adults and our children, I mean, it does behoove us to consider that in all of our planning. I mean, we don't want to do anything that would contribute to the negative impact that educators and kids would receive, so I would just offer that as thought. But, you clarified it, it wasn't the only reason that drove the calendar.
No, it was not the only reason, the only thing that drove it, and we also looked at other calendars in the neighboring area before we started, and there were some that were similar to ours.
And just to kind of get on record, I know that there's a committee that works with you. My understanding is there is instructional representation on that committee. However, I do believe that our BFT, rightfully so, would like to have some input into whatever instructional voice is on that committee, so if we can just make sure that happens, then.
Absolutely, and we've had, Dan and I have had those conversations as well.
No, we don't want Dan, but we'll let Dan pick someone.
Sounds perfect.
Ms. Daskovich, I believe you had a follow-up question, and then Mr. Craig.
If I'm correct, isn't there a bill that is up right now that they want to move the testing window to the last three weeks of school? If that came to fruition, then, right now, we're open to move it whenever we would like to.
That's right.
Just want to throw that out there. If, I'm curious, because you said there's other issues besides the testing window. Can you give me an example?
Well, everything from religious holidays that also go into the testing window and can impact that as well, and we look at not just what happens with the students, but also what happens with the staff, because there is a group of people that have to do the preparation for those assessments. And there is the evaluation system that falls right in the middle of it, and there's also the number of days that a student needs to be in school during the year, so there's a lot of different things that we look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diaz, and, well, Ms. Belford brought it to the discussion point, it probably, Genesis was with me. I had several parents and teachers ask me why it was so late, and I remembered the discussion about testing windows and EOCs and trying to make sure that we, you know, we try to give a fair and balanced opportunity for everybody to succeed, which sounded great in my mind, and then I'm like, "Yeah, that just doesn't sound exactly, though," especially when I look at the backside of that week this year, and it's about three and a half weeks before graduation, you know? So, it's pretty tight. And then, and as Ms. Belford talked again, or spoke about, anecdotally, I've had several, since then, discussions at different schools, both at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, that have all said, "Man, everybody's just on edge, they're burned out, you know? It is, it's just getting to a point where we can't wait for spring break, and then we look at it and it's still three weeks away." And so, anyway, that was where the discussion came from. It wasn't specific to anything that you all did, obviously, bad on us that we didn't look at it at the time. You know, sometimes we look at it and go, "That looks great," you know, and then maybe we get some questions, like I did, that makes us discuss it. So, I really appreciate you bringing forward, you know, your process, and I think Dr. Blackburn has some good ideas to continue to look at it. We'll see what the new bill does, and we'll continue to do it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nothing we can do this year.
Perhaps it would help, though, if we gave the board a written list of all of the factors that contributed to the calendar, just for speaking points, because it's more than just assessment.
That'd be great, because we do get questions on it, and, yeah, I appreciate it.
Mr. Craig, I believe there were.
Thank you.
While Ms. Diaz is here, I believe that there were some other calendar issues that you had mentioned that perhaps you should share with her prior to planning.
And I think we've already addressed one after Ms. Skipper talked at the last board meeting. I believe Dr. Blackburn is already addressing this, but it was the placement of the nine-week grades, grading period in March, coming right before the day that was set aside for teacher planning to do the nine-week grades that were due at four o'clock the day before that. So, I think we've figured out that for next year, and I appreciate that. The other issue was, and this has been brought to me by a couple of different kindergarten teachers, actually, and the placement of parent conferences on the calendar, and this has gone on for a couple of years now, of, they're about, it's about three weeks after the actual report cards or status cards are given, and most of those times, the kindergarten teachers, if, you know, they have to address that stuff right then, otherwise, three weeks later is just way too late to be in a kindergartner's life. That's an eternity, so you have to address that. So, most of the kindergarten teachers are doing on their own time, parent conferences, trying to get ahead of the game instead of waiting for that parent conference night, which is three, three and a half weeks after those report cards are actually issued. So, I would just ask that maybe we could look at the placement of some of those nights so that we make it a little bit tighter to where the teachers are actually doing their work right now, because I think if we went out and did a bit of a survey, you'd find that most of those teachers have identified the children that probably need a parent to come in and talk about the way they're progressing, and that by the time they get to that window, it's a night spent with nobody there. So, anyway, just something that I'd ask that we look at.
Excellent feedback, thank you. And we will share that with Leading and Learning because they are partners with us in creating that piece of the calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your time this evening. Mr. Ziegler, although not officially added to the agenda as a discussion item, I believe you had one more issue that you'd like to have some brief discussion on this evening?
Yes. Earlier today, I had copied the board on an email chain back and forth with benefits, and I wanted to explain a little more and get the board, get the board's direction on something, and it has to do with benefits. And to qualify how this started, first of all, we have a benefit to our employees with sick, relevant to sick time, which is unlimited accrued sick time. And then upon retirement, they are eligible to cash out that collected accrued sick time. And this is not whether or not I agree with that or not. It started probably back in, I think, 2009, 2010, we had a very respected assistant principal that retired, put in his time, met all the qualifications as best I could see for retirement, and upon going through his retirement process, was told that he would not receive his paid-out sick time, accrued sick time, because he was continuing in a job that, with another government organization, that paid FRS. And because he wasn't retiring out of FRS, we then weren't going to consider him as retired, and therefore, he didn't get his paid-out sick time. When questioning why that was, I was told at that point in time, "That's just the way we do things," which, of course, is one of those stories that we don't like to hear. We like to see written policy. Since then, I've heard mumblings about this up until, again, recently, I had an employee come up to me, a 27-year teacher, 50 years old, won't mention any names, of course, who decided that it's time for them to retire. Definitely put their time in, valued employee of the district, and upon going through the process, found out that they would not be eligible for their paid-out sick time. And when I inquired, I got information back, which I shared with you all, and looking at Administrative Procedure 3428, we actually follow, our definition of retirement, which I absolutely disagree with, I think it's unfair, follows the state's FRS definition of retirement, which varies depending on whether an employee chose to be in the defined benefit, FRS retirement plan, which is a standard plan, or the defined contribution FRS, which is the investment plan. And where it differs is, is that there's a 17-year difference, where in the defined benefit plan, you could retire as early as 42, but if you chose to go the investment plan, then retirement doesn't, you can't retire until 59 and a half without being defined as retired and being eligible for your paid-out sick time. I don't see where it is our place as a board, as an organization, to define retirement based on how an individual chooses to construct their retirement plans for when they retire, whether it be 401K, a 457, a 403, an FRS, whatever it is, that's an individual's right to plan for their future, and I feel like we're penalizing them for choosing a particular retirement path. I believe that all employees should be treated fairly. Our definition of retirement should be equal for all employees, irregardless of what the federal government says about 401K disbursements, or the state says about FRS disbursements, because this particular teacher that reached out to me recently is now being denied their paid-out sick time because they are in the investment plan, and they would need to go another, in this case, they would have to go another nine and a half years, whereas somebody who was in the defined benefit plan, they would have got their paid-out sick time. And I just find that's extremely unfair to do it that way. I would like, I would like to know that the board agrees we should be fair and equal to all employees when it comes to defining retirement, and that we should look at this and find a better way to define retirement, other than always adopting what a state or federal regulation says retirement is. I don't think that retirement is anything other than what we define it in our organization, and whether they go on to work in another organization, or whatever their design is for their retirement wealth, should really be none of our business.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Ziegler? Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Ziegler?
Sure.
It sounds to me as though what you're saying is that that sick time should be paid out regardless of retirement or resignation.
No, no. I'm saying that it should be a fair application across all employees, irregardless of their retirement path, as long as it's a definition of retirement, not resignation, resignation and then they lose it. But in this case, it appears that, depending on the path they're on, and when they, quote, retire, the state is saying it's not quite a retirement. And then, therefore, it's treated as a resignation, and they're losing their benefit. But it is not a resignation, it's a retirement.
So, may I ask how you would suggest that we delineate between a resignation and a retirement if they have not reached the official retirement age per their retirement plan?
I think we, I think we should define it. I don't think that we should, I don't think we should set a retirement age based on whether they choose a defined benefit or defined contribution. If FRS wants to do that for numerical calculation reasons, to be able to fund their, the state retirement system, so be it. That's up to them. But I don't think that's fair to employees to say, well, all right, some of you can retire 17 years earlier than others because you chose a specific path. That just doesn't, that just sounds unfair to me.
And I'm, I agree with you that there should be some equity in the way that we apply the policies. I just want, I was just trying to wrap my head around where you delineate there.
And I don't know the answer. I think, I would like staff to look at it and see if there's, because once we come up with something, they're going to have to apply a litmus test to say, say, what are the ramifications, what are the pros, what are the cons? But I would just like to see a fair definition of retirement, probably get BFT's input on it, so that we're applying it to all employees, treating all employees fair and equally when it comes to retirement.
And I believe, and I'm coming to you right after this comment, Mr. Susan, I believe that Ms. Zirker has already started doing some research in that area and is planning on bringing back additional information to the board.
That would be great.
That is correct. We've started a project this week in our department to see how sick leave is handled across all 67 school districts, and how and when it is paid out.
Mr. Susan.
Resignations aren't always bad. And sometimes, teachers like myself will resign to not retire, so that one day they can come back. Because once there's, once you officially set that, you can't come back in most cases. So when I was teaching, and I had sick leave accrued, I lost it, even though I left on good standing. So I would say, if you're moving forward, I would say if it's a good-standing resignation, that you should be able to get that too. Because that's unfair, to say that just because you retired at a certain number of years, or you resigned, you got it.
I would think that determining a good-standing resignation may be difficult, but I would suggest that we leave it to the expertise of Ms. Zirker and her team to do the research and bring back recommendations of multiple possibilities, and then we can decide which way to go. Does that work for the board?
Yes.
Excellent. Any additional board discussion? Thank you, Ms. Zirker. Dr. Blackburn, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Just to, I know that the board and most of the general public is aware of one of our operational audits from the Auditor General. There were over 45 processes and procedures that were looked at, and there were eight findings. Of those eight findings, you heard our public speakers speak to two of them, where a decision has to be made by the superintendent by April 23rd, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Zirker? I do have to respond to the Auditor General and declare whether or not on direct support to the foundation, whether we will seek to recover and/or moving forward, do a cease and desist that practice, and with the best and brightest overpayment, whether or not we will seek reimbursement of those funds from teachers. So I'd like to, we have not made those decisions as a staff. I don't have a recommendation here tonight. But certainly, we heard from two impacted stakeholders earlier this evening. So to give the board an opportunity to weigh in on any kind of opinion or anything like that, if the board so chooses.
Is that it for your superintendent evaluate, or your superintendent report?
That's it. I gave, I gave, I did the fun stuff earlier, so we'll do the painful stuff now.
You are good, sir. Any additional board comments, questions on the AG information? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, because he has to, he has to prepare a response that he has to send to the Auditor General.
Well, so, draft the timeline for you. What, I looked at the calendar. It's due to the Auditor General by April 23. We have an April 18 board meeting. And while I don't believe the recommendation would be something that is brought to you for a vote, I would certainly announce it and communicate it before the April 18 board meeting. And I would also, since I have until April 23, I will delay submitting until after April 18. So we have tonight to discuss. Staff and I have an opportunity to take discussion, apply, speak with Mr. Beislin, and do all of our work, and then come up with a recommendation that we will certainly announce before your April 18 board meeting, to give public and board an opportunity to discuss yet again.
Mr. Ziegler.
With ref- Uh-huh.
I was trying to help you.
You were turning it off. Go ahead, turn it on. Thank you, Ms. Chairperson. With reference to the best and brightest, I'm not clear as to whether we made an error or whether we followed the rules and following those same initial rules would come up with the same results. Either way, I'm sure best effort was made, and I find it hard to go back to those employees and ask for that money back, since I, my guess is the rules were vague, and we followed them to the best of our ability. I don't think the employees should be penalized. With reference to the foundation, something we've been doing for quite a long time, I don't, I don't suggest we look to recoup. I don't suggest that we cease. I suggest that we continue. I think that they are an integral part of this family. They do phenomenal work for our schools, very desperately needed. And the return on investment, I would, I would increase the amount if they would proportionally increase their amount. But needless to say, I agree. And it's interesting about what Mason Williams said about that, that they were saying there's no law saying that we could do it, which is similar to a question that I was asking earlier today with the attorneys, is too frequently, we're said, well, there's no law saying you can do it, so you can't do it. Well, no, there's no law saying you can't do it. So unless it's prohibited by law, I don't see that we're doing anything wrong, and I think that great work is being done, and I support the work.
Ms. Zirker, if you wouldn't mind, in, kind of in response to Mr. Ziegler's comment question about best and brightest, I had asked you to look earlier into other districts that had audit findings as a result of best and brightest, because I felt strongly like we were not alone in some findings on our audit as a result of potentially ambiguous direction, lack of clarity, whatever you want to call it, from the state level. Could you share with the board what you found on that?
Absolutely. To begin with, I want to remind the board, the way the audits work, the small counties get every year by the AG, medium and large, it's every three years. So roughly a third of the 67 are audited each year. 10, including ourselves, were found to have best and brightest findings, ranging from the AG didn't agree with the type of documents that were used to make the decision, to the method and process that was done. We're kind of a combination of the two. Going into last year, the direction was rather ambiguous. We did have some mistakes on our side, that we had one person doing that process. And as a result of both the ambiguity of the decision, of the process, and not having enough eyes on it, we did have the finding come through, very similar to nine other counties. And just for reference, that's Duval, Flagler, Gatsin, Indian River, Manatee, Orange, Palm Beach, Pasco, and Putnam. So we're in a big group there. We did change that process effective prior to the Auditor General even looking at it. And it had a whole new process that involves a team of six, overseen by Dr. Kent and myself.
So, just to frame what we just heard, if the students in Mr. Bennett's class, 50% of them got, you know, failed a test, I would assert that there was something wrong with Mr. Bennett's test. That's one. Second, I'm most frustrated by this finding, because the same state of Florida, while I understand completely different departments, but the same state who had the skill set to come in and audit to an explicit standard, just several months earlier, did not have the same explicit standard when advising school districts. And so, and 50%, close to 50% of the districts audited had that finding. Muddying the waters even more, as I've mentioned earlier, I think, Mrs. Belford, over-under payment of employees, those things do happen. Typically, they are corrected. But to BFT's credit, I don't think you see them standing up here talking to us when all those other over-under payments happen. There's a particular level of concern regarding best and brightest, which I think adds to the concerns.
Mr. Susan.
Sentiments exactly, as far as intent goes towards the best and brightest, I would find it bad policy to try to reach back and grab those, based upon what was going on before, and also if Mason's comments are correct, and that the attorney, or that the auditors are going to curb our school board power with this move, along with the fact that the foundation has done such a good job for us through the years. I would go against any recommendation to change the current path that we have, if you're looking for intent from the board.
Mr. Craig.
As for, first of all, Dr. Blackburn, thank you for addressing the Auditor General's report. I think that is critical, that we take ownership, accountability for it. It is, I think, always a great thing when we get an outside set of eyes to come in and look. I'm, was happy that, you know, that there was a very small amount of issues that were brought forward, specific to the two that you brought up, the Brevard Schools Foundation. There's no one up here that doesn't believe that the Brevard Schools Foundation is not an integral part of who we are and what we do, the services that they provide. I think we're just missing the mark a little bit, because to me, this is taxpayer money. I want to know exactly what it's being used for. So it, instead of just the generic administrative expenses, we need to know what it is we're exactly contracting for, realizing that the organization is our 501(c)(3), that we are responsible for. We created it, we are responsible to audit it, and for the finances and all those things, meaning us as the board. So it's not a standalone institution, it is part of us. And just like any other department, I think that we need to know exactly how that money is being utilized, so that we can make that transparent, and that everybody understands that this is what we are using it for. And specifically, that it's not being used to bring down the overhead costs as far as a normal nonprofit is used. So I think that's an easy thing to do. I don't think that that is, you know, outside the realm of anything that we're talking about, but I think that it is important. I think that Auditor General finding raises a specter that we do need to know that, and that the public needs to know that. You know, if we're going to give $50,000 a year to them, what is exactly that we're asking them, or that they're spending it on? The best and brightest, it's funny, you know, before you came, we wrote a letter to the, maybe you were already here, I can't remember. But the board wrote a letter to the governor that was personally delivered to him, and believe it or not, he agrees with this completely. He doesn't like that program, and he's come out and spoke against it many times, and believes that we should use the money for teacher enrichment and for certifications, just as we said that we should. That notwithstanding, I would, I defer to you and the internal process that brought forward the results that it did, and the payments that we made. And I would like to hear your recommendation when you get that, based on your study of the process and the results against other counties. Because I tend to err to the side of, we have, as long as we've done our due diligence, and we've done what we were told to do, coming back after the fact and telling us that we did it wrong, because the rules changed, or the rules weren't specific enough, is way too, then we go back and change everything. So I look forward to hearing what your recommendation is on that.
Ms. Duskovich, would you like to weigh in?
Oh, sure. Pretty simple. I agree mostly with what John said and the others. I think we can't reach back and ask our employees to return the best and brightest. However, I think we need to look at the process for the future, align it better. I mean, we don't want to have audit report findings, so if there's a way to do it how they have now proclaimed for this year, let's avoid audit report findings. And as for Brevard Schools Foundation, again, I don't think we need to reach back if we didn't officially violate anything and recoup anything. However, Mr. Craig is correct, I think we need to be a little bit more accountable. And once again, is there a way of structuring it so we don't raise a red flag? Is there a way to align what we're paying for through Brevard School Foundation in a way that doesn't cause any concern? Let's, I just think we need to look at a different approach.
I would second Ms. Duskovich's direction on the Brevard Schools Foundation, and looking at creative ways to move forward that may cause us less headache. I think certainly Mr. Craig's comment about having details on what those dollars are supporting is important, simply because it is taxpayer dollars, and we want to ensure that the dollars are, we know that the return on investment for the Schools Foundation is phenomenal. I don't think there's any doubt there. But I do think that we need to be able to tell our public that those dollars are doing specific things for the foundation. But even better, if we can not only get those details, but also come up with a creative structure for those funds to flow in the future, so we can continue to provide support, but perhaps, you know, appease the AG in the process. If we can't find some creative solution, I certainly am not in favor of reaching back or refusing those funds in the future, until we get a very clear delineation that that is something that we cannot do. Best and brightest, I agree. We can't go back at this point and ask for that money back from those teachers. You know, we have teachers that are working two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And while there are certainly some folks in the world that you could go back and ask that money from, and it would not have a detrimental effect on their life, I don't know that any of our teachers are in the situation that they could return those funds, and it would not be an absolute nightmare for them. And so because of that, I just cannot put them in that place. And I, I feel like certainly we can improve process, but I think there was a lot of, a very large lack of clarity in the information that we were getting from Tallahassee as well. And I, there again, I cannot hold our teachers accountable for that.
Thank you. So to reiterate, a decision is due by April 23. I know we have spring break in between, but we'll do everything possible to announce to the board, BFT, and the foundation prior to the April 18 board meeting, what the final recommendation will be.
Dr.- Mr. Ziegler.
One last question. How much of the money from that mandate comes to us to compensate staff for the intense labor it takes to do all those calculations?
None, sir.
That's what I thought, none. Thank you.
And just for information for the board, DOE will require the district to pay that money back to them. We've already had communication with them on that.
I think we should send DOE a bill for our staff time to administer their program, Ms. Zirker.
Yes, deduct your staff time from that before you send it.
I will see what I can do there.
Anything else, Dr. Blackburn?
No, ma'am.
Anything else, board members?
No, ma'am.
We are officially adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. See some of you in Tallahassee.